I pledge allegiance to the United States of America in terms of our public force of standards, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Butler? Jordan?
Here.
Lipscomb?
Here.
Hooprich?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Thrash?
Here.
Concenta?
Here.
Six members present, one absent.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is the minutes from the December 19th regular meeting. Is there anyone who did not receive those minutes? Is there anyone that has any question about those? Okay, hearing no questions, I will then entertain a motion to accept the December 19 minutes.
Make that motion.
Second? Second? Good move, and second, we'll take a roll call vote.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Hooprich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Concenta?
Yes.
All members your favorite.
Okay, the minutes from the 19th meeting have been approved. I'm gonna make a slight change on the agenda. I've got a couple requests. We're going to have an executive session at the end of the meeting, but it's been requested by a couple people to have it at the beginning of the meeting. The executive session is basically 121.22G3, which is the possibility of council and city being involved in litigation. So at this time, I will request a motion to go to executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session under ORC 121.22G3.
Do I have a second? Two seconds. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Hooprich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Concenta?
Yes.
All members your favorite.
Okay, we will move into executive session. As per usual, ask everyone to leave all communications devices, phones, cell phones,
Watches.
Watches, everything that you can communicate on and leave them here in the council chamber.
I'm doing that, but I disagree with that. But I'm ready for the second.
Alright, I got you. Okay, this time we'll move to executive session. Okay, folks, we're back into regular session. And then we'll just move to that second. Okay, round of executive session, will you get a vote on that?
You need to, yes, you need to vote, and you need to state if any action was taken.
Right. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Jordan? Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Hooprich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Concenta?
Yes.
All members your favorite.
Okay, we're back to regular session, and there was no action of any kind taken in the executive session. Okay, we'll move on to reports.
Will you do correspondence?
I don't have any.
I have a piece of correspondence, please. I'll make it very quick. I'm requesting that council president and council members allow me to include this statement in the December 19, 2022 minutes to truthfully and accurately reflect my position regarding objection and vote, my objection and vote during the December 5, 2022 meeting. I add this due to the fact that I was portrayed during that meeting in the media and on social media by the administration and other council members in an untruthful, inaccurate, and unfavorable light. Let the minutes and the media reflect that I was not being obstinate. I, as an equal council member, have the right to vote as I so desire. I am not obligated to explain my vote to the administration or council. What I am obligated to do is vote my mind for the benefit of the city of St. Clairsville, and most importantly, my constituents. Even if it is a dissenting vote, the minutes should also reflect that I was absolutely correct in my dissension due to the fact that the proposed action would have been in violation of ORC 5705.12. Furthermore, I would suggest that my dissenting opinion saved the city of St. Clairsville and its fine citizens from an illegal and very embarrassing situation. Thank you for your consideration and allowing me to have the minutes of the meeting of December 5, 2022 reflect my position and vote due to the fact an illegal action was being taken. Respectfully submitted, Councilwoman Linda Jordan.
Okay, question, the minutes have been accepted. Can this be added to the minutes? The minutes themselves cannot be changed.
The minutes themselves, you've already voted on, but it can be added to the minutes of this meeting.
The minutes can't be changed, but that could be added to the...
I'd like to talk about... Linda, you want us to vote on this?
I don't know if you need to vote or not, I'm just asking for...
Yeah, she just read the correspondence into the... Can I see?
Sure.
She just read the correspondence into these minutes.
Into the minutes we just passed? No, tonight's minutes. She's going to attach to tonight's.
The other minutes cannot be amended to accept that, because they've already been passed, but this can be added.
But it can be added. Well, you mean in tonight's, you want this to be in the minutes?
The pre, the last meetings.
Tonight's, because they can't do it.
That will be added as a separate attachment to the minutes.
So in two weeks when we come back?
That will be an attachment to the minutes.
That's what you're asking?
For the December 19th meeting that we add?
We can't go back. We can't go back, but we can add it to tonight's, so it's still there.
Add it to some minutes.
Tonight's.
Yep, that's fine.
So this is what you want added, so if we vote next time, we need to make a decision whether or not we think this should, that's what you're asking, right? It's just like any other correspondence.
She read it.
She read it. That's just attached.
She read it as a correspondence.
I've got nothing to say about it, but I'm allowed to read it.
Yeah, she read it as a correspondence, and that will be attached to the minutes in the next meeting. You don't have to, when you vote on the minutes, you will vote on that attachment also.
And if I want to add an attachment, I can do that too, if I wanted to. If, when you do your minutes?
The minutes, right.
You can, you can move and say, I need to amend the minutes to add your attachment, and then council can vote. Okay. You know, you can table your minutes and vote on the next meeting, if you so choose. But once you've passed them, those are the official minutes.
So that, like I said, the letter that she read tonight can be added to the minutes for tonight's meeting, and that's what you'll vote on at the next council meeting. Everybody understand that now? Did you give Jacob a copy of that?
I got a copy.
Okay, so he will include a copy of that statement to go out with minutes when he sends out the minutes for the next meeting.
Right?
The next meeting. That will, aside from the minutes, that letter in its entirety, in a way, will be added as an attachment to the minutes. Okay, are we cool? Now, are we, have any more questions on this?
You're requesting us to look at this, so I think it's fair to ask questions. Yeah, okay.
Alright, we'll try this again. Does anybody have any other questions about that before we get sergeant? Okay, first report to marriage report.
Thank you, Jim. And as we begin our new year, we look to the future, I hope that everyone did have a safe, happy, and healthy Christmas and holiday season. I'd only give a huge shout out to our electric, street, water, and sewer departments. During this past two weeks, as we all know, the weather took a decidedly unfriendly turn the day before Christmas Eve, dropping 60 degrees in a length of about six hours, with winds blowing up to 70 miles an hour. We did not lose power anywhere in the boundaries of the city, but plenty of surrounding communities did. Our biggest concern was with freezing pipes, and it was a well-founded concern. Calls started in early on Christmas Eve, clear up through Christmas evening, when workers should have been home with their families. But instead, these loyal city heroes came to work in two-degree temperatures, braving the wind and the 30 below wind chill factor to repair their friends and neighbors' water supplies. And Christmas Day didn't see much of a letup. Two large city water breaks had to cruise out again, fixing breaks to our city water, so our city did have water on Christmas. And again, the temperature was like a balmy four degrees that day. The weather disaster actually served to remind me how blessed we are that we did not sell our water. When we were in conversations with Aqua, I remember asking them about their response time to break some problems, bad, bad problems. They hedged when they told me they had a national call center in Springfield, Illinois, and that if needed, workers would be dispatched from Youngstown to Buck Medina. And I'm just taking a guess, but with the disastrous weather over the East Coast that weekend, Aqua is probably still sending crews to their bigger cities. We probably would have been relegated to the bottom of the list and might not have had water or sewer. So when you see our city workers, please give them a big thank you. They take great pride in keeping our town working properly, and if working through Christmas doesn't show it, I really don't know what will. Much of the thanks goes to Donnie Smithberger, who's always ready to jump in and help, and to Jeremy Greenwood. And even though it is not his job as service director to go out and work in the trenches, he was in the frozen trenches with our workers. Not his job, but it is his city. Darren Pitlack and Jason Duval also had their teams and themselves working out in the cold, keeping us going. Dustin was ready to, if we had electric emergency, he was ready to roll. This is a wonderful example of having our family employees take care of our town. And speaking of that, I'm asking tonight to ask everyone to go down in their basement and look to see where your water shut-off is in your house. We're now at 60 degrees, we're not in a state of emergency, but we had tons of phone calls from people having broken water pipes, wondering, where is my water shut-off? And our city workers could not go to everyone's home and say, here it is. But I'm asking you this week, be preemptive, know where it is. Also, if we get another spate of weather like that, please do not shut off vents or heaters to your garage. We had people doing that to try to keep the bill down, but then the pipes in the garages froze and broke, so it really doesn't save a lot of money when you've got a call of plumber. And I can't think of a better example of true meaning of the holidays and giving as our Newellstown Diner and Mary Jane's Bakery opened their doors all day on Christmas, free breakfast, free ham, and turkey dinners. This is a real meaning of service and love in our community. I stopped in to say hello at the diner and witnessed a full restaurant filled with people who had no dinner at home, or more often, no one to talk to. These, to me, are real corporal works of mercy. I look forward to service and loving my town, seeing what amazing and wonderful things this coming year will bring. God bless our wonderful little town.
Thank you, Captain. Anybody have any questions for the mayor? Thank you, Captain. I will have to agree that you guys did a lot of work over Christmas, and they were out in pretty ugly weather. I know they were, one of the houses that had water broken and water lines running all over the place was my next-door neighbor, so I know they were out all kind of hours, different hours in the day, and water up to their knees sometimes. So the great job, Donnie, to all the guys, and I don't think we can thank them enough in that kind of weather.
I do, I don't know if this is the right time to say it, but I got a call from a resident on Christmas Eve, called Jeremy, called the mayor. One of the lift stations is behind his house, he had sewer coming up, his garage drain. Thought it was the city's, and they came, they went out, Jeremy was out there, checked it all out, and it was a broken pipe in his own yard, and he did call Roto-Rooter, but, you know, the mayor was offering to go and get, you know, heaters at Rural King if they were open to put down the lift station, and Jeremy was out there checking stuff on Christmas Eve, so...
They were out for at least two hours that night in the cold.
It was so cold.
He kept sending me texts saying, I quit, I quit, I quit, and I said, you can't, you can't, you can't.
I felt that calling, but, so thank you. Above and beyond.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to service director.
Alright, we'll try and make this short. Legislation items, we've got the second reading of the 2022 49, the transportation TAP application. That's emergency. The application is due January 31st, so that can be multiple readings if council so wishes. 2023 O1, ODOT shell program. Tom's been heading this up, it's a road application for paving. That is also due January 31st, too, so that's got emergency language in it. It can be multiple readings, but it can't be more than really two because of the deadline. And then there's 2023 02, the interfund transfer, that's an emergency, we need to be able to do that to pay the bills. Completed projects, Zimba was working on our sledge ponds at our water plant. We have four water line breaks over the Christmas weekend and the week after. We did receive five fire hydrants finally. We're developing a replacement list based off of what's available and what is going to be happening with the distribution project. We did get 142 water nodes that were delivered. The first orders of those were coming in, well, in March 2020, so we're finally starting to catch back up. What do we have currently? There's like 100, 100 meters.
About 70.
70 meters. There's 70 meters right now that are getting charged minimum amounts because we can't read the meter because these nodes, these battery nodes are not recording. Skip most of this, skip most of that. The other big thing that I found out, we had 24 total water line breaks for '22. I did find out... Outcoming projects, the I-70 project, I was just informed this afternoon that they're going to be starting on Monday. They were going to try and mobilize this week, but with the rain, it was too much. So hopefully that takes care of the issues. I know we had problems with the traffic control again this weekend. Water line breaks, snowstorm. I had several complaints from some people about the snow being on some of the streets. Just wanted to say that, you know, please note that, you know, salt does not work when it's below 15 degrees, and that's what we had. So crews were doing the best that we could with what we had. We do not have access to some of the other things like ODOT does with the beet juice and some of those other things that they do. And then the only other thing, I got two, well, two things I want to mention. One, the rec center did receive the Pirates Charity Grant for work at Junior Sports Fields. That's about $11,000 grant, so thank Eric for that. And then I had some correspondence from Scott Velcastro with Travel. He said, please share this with council. I will email this to everybody. Kind of crossed paths today, didn't get to see it. Reflecting back on our initial conversation in the room against our competitor, you can see why we exercise patience in these crazy markets. Today, the cost of NG is trading around 40 cents. Adding in all the utility adders, all the all-in rate would be .565 versus the .79 that our competitors are set to close in at. Call it luck, call it knowledge, I just know we've made the right decision. See attached NG graph, that'll be in there, this past 15 days. As you can see, there's quite a big fluctuation there. One additional item we should think about, it tends to get colder later in the winter season. We should be thinking about acting quickly to be ready to lock in the rate. There exists the potential for rates to climb later in the season. Update on that, too, we did have our public hearing. That was Thursday, I think, yeah. And nobody attended, there was no one here, no one from the public here, so we should be good to go now. And as soon as they give me the go-ahead, per what council approved, I think, last meeting or the meeting before, we will have the ability to sign and inlock in the rates. So once that happens, I will let council know that we have and what the rate is. And that's not everything, but that's enough.
Okay, any questions for the service director?
A couple things. How did those big water lines hold up in the cold weather?
We basically had the water plant running all weekend. We usually shut it down for at least, what, six hours or if not more on the weekends. We had the guys in working overtime, and they ran the water the whole time, making water.
Those big temporary...
So as long as, it's just like an old, an old house, if you're running the water, the line won't freeze. So that's basically what we did, we ran both weekends.
Okay. And on, what is 2023 02 on the transfer? Why do we need to do that? So we just passed a budget, we transfer...
It's part of the budget, we have to actually, we do this every year, the first of the year. It just approves the transfers, and then the other funds from the general fund. It's part of the budget, but it's separate, the transfers are. So February, January, we do this.
Okay. Any other questions for the service director?
Can you say I-70 project is starting Monday?
Supposed to be Monday, yep.
Like a timeframe, how long you think?
My thought, initial thought, depending on weather, obviously, would be, you know, maximum a month, minimum two weeks, so anywhere from two to four weeks. The equipment's all here, everything's ready, all the materials are here, it's literally, the only snag that we might have is getting in, once we get into that other call, or the existing one, and if it's got a bad spot or something, then that's going to throw a monkey wrench into everything. But from what we've seen so far, it looks like it's in good shape. It's just fingers crossed until we can actually get down there, dig it up, and then see.
Thank you. Welcome. Any other questions for the service director? Thank you, Jeremy. Welcome. Move on to police chief, Matt, do you have a report?
Good evening, council, this is the year-end report. For 2022, we had 4,741 calls for service, two SWAT team call-outs, 132 accidents, 331 arrests, 49 warrants served, 49 domestics, and 1,360 traffic stops. All without major injury or incident, and high success rate of convictions on the arrests, so I'm pretty happy with that.
Matt, are these numbers kind of the same as they have been every month?
Well, this is the end of the year, but yeah, our numbers typically...
December?
Decembers go up, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, December numbers are up on domestic type of calls.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions for the police chief? Thank you, Matt. Move on to finance director, Nat Malden.
Good evening, everyone, happy new year. Finance department, we're just busy doing payroll today, actually, and tomorrow, the first payroll. We have to do vacation payouts and then add everybody's vacation and personal time, so it's a really busy time for us. And Jeremy's going to be meeting with the department head soon for the projects for 2023, and hopefully we'll be able to plug the numbers in and get you the budget by the first meeting in February or before that meeting, so we can have the first reading. We'll have three readings. That's all I have.
Any questions for finance director? Okay, move on to planning and zoning administrator, Mr. Murphy.
Thanks, Jim. Bring council's attention to this ordinance, a resolution 2023.01. City plans to apply to Ohio Department of Transportation's local road oil and gas program funding. Funding is available to communities acted by through truck tracking for oil and gas production. Very competitive grant, however, we figured it would be prudent to make an attempt at five for the month. The deadlines make that preliminary application is January 31st of this year, so it's imperative, I'd love for council to approve that today by emergency. There's a total of $2.5 million of funding available for the next funding years, villages, cities, and townships can apply. Let's see, if that shows your kind of competitive nature, I think it's eight counties and all the villages, cities, and townships in those counties can all apply. It's a 100% ODOT grant, which is a good thing, as long as you don't exceed $500,000, which means then the entire project will be paid for prior to discovering the point-based system. Prior to applying, we discussed this with Bellmar. Major aspects of the point system are average daily traffic of the city streets, truck traffic on the city streets, and that's why that is really the only street other than nine and 40 that had that area was North Sherwood Street. Because of the heavy, I'm sure everybody lives in that area, the, you know, when sandboxes were going up and down, lots of trucks, they were using North Sherwood, so... With that said, I'm pretty sure that council could approve it by, at least we have that. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Want to get me a glass of water?
There's another one.
Do you think if I've been recessed, we need to go out and take a drink of water or something? Is it okay? Okay? Okay, welcome.
Nat, can I ask if there was any questions?
Any other questions for Tom?
Jay said you wanted to pass tonight.
Ideally, then, I mean, there's no, I don't see really any reason to not pass it tonight, I don't think it's a good thing it gets us. At least we'll be able to fly and possibly, yeah, we're ready for this.
How many streets could this, did we have with the oil and gas traffic traffic?
Other than nine and 40, this was the only one I hoped it, South Sugar, too, was a potential, because that's in worse shape, but South Sugar, the numbers I got with Bellmar were drastically reduced. What we tried to look for is where you can gain the most points, what streets you can get the most points on, and North Sugar exceeded that prior period with both the, especially the regular vehicles and also truck traffic.
Any other questions for Tom? Before we move on to council committee meetings, you want to take five minutes? You sure? We'll move on to finance, Mr. Concento.
I have the report.
Utilities?
Oh, yes, we had a utility meetings tonight. My thanks to Anita, who's always very well prepared for those meetings. We just reviewed the utility report for 2022, the final report, and ran four requests from residents for store requests and one ACH program. So that was utility committee. So the next utility committee meeting, it's always the first Monday at the month before the council meeting, 6:15. So whatever that next first Monday is in February...
February 6th.
February 6th, it's 6:15. And want to welcome officially Donnie Concento to the utility committee.
Okay, anybody have any questions on utilities? Police committee, Mike, ever, anything on the police?
No report, we'll have a meeting January 16th, I think, next meeting, after the regular council meeting.
Okay, it'll be the 17th, because that's another holiday, it'll be Tuesday to 17th.
It's a holiday on the...
Pardon, it's a King Day.
Oh, okay.
So that'll be celebrated...
18th, 17th.
17th.
No, the 16th.
16th is the holiday.
16th is the holiday, so, yeah.
Sixteenth is the holiday, so, yeah.
16th is the holiday, Tuesday to 17th is when council.
Right. Maybe it'll be 17th.
Okay.
Okay, streets north side, Mike, do you have anything on north side streets?
No report. I gotta get my feet wet on that committee.
J.C., anything on the south side? Anything on safety? Building and grounds, anything bad?
Not a clue. But I will get that committee together.
This is kind of a change over, whether you do change a few people on committees, first meeting of the month.
That's a big one.
New Year's kind of. Okay, move on to planning commission, Christie, do you have anything on planning commission?
Nothing additional to what Mr. Murphy said.
Okay, fire district, Linda, do you have anything on fire district?
The board voted to appoint the chairperson for 2023. We also voted to appoint, appointment and compensation for the fire chief, assistant fire chief, and this belongs to the 2023. Next meeting is on January 11th, I want to say, at 8:00 a.m. I'll correct you if I'm not correct myself if I'm wrong. At the firehouse, yes.
Anybody have any questions for the fire district?
Who's the township trustee representative of the?
Jim Genoville.
Thank you.
Okay, recreation, Christie?
I'll try to do without checking the depth. As Jeremy mentioned, Eric Gay was notified on Christmas Eve that the rec center was awarded the $11,000 grant from the Pirates. This is a joint project between the city and Junior Sports. The money will be utilized to make improvements to the Bronco field, which is the lower level field when entering the complex. Registration is now open for indoor soccer for boys and girls, kindergarten through fourth grade. Registration is also open for girls indoor volleyball, open to all girls in third through sixth grade. Registration's open for adult co-ed volleyball league. This league is open to adults 18 and over. The next rec board meeting is January 19th at 4:30 at the rec center.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Christie? All right, Mr. Christie.
Not for Christie, but the next finance meeting will be the 17th.
I have a comment for the rec center. Like since I've been here and Eric has came on, I mean, it's been just a big, big turnaround. He is really doing an excellent job. There was no care of him in anything before, so he's really on top of things. I mean, it's important and everything. He's just, yeah, he represents the city well.
Okay, any other questions or comments on rec center? Move on to park district, Linda, anything on park district?
The next meeting is next Monday, the 9th, January 9th, 4:30 p.m. at the Premier Legacy Bank. And a correction on that fire district, or fire board meeting, is January 18th.
18.
Yes, at 8:00 a.m.
Okay, that committee, citizens of the council committees, move on to ordinances, resolutions?
Council has before its three pieces of legislation. Ordinance number 2023-01 and 2023-02 are listed for first reading. Mr. Murphy's requested that 2023-01 be passed on an emergency basis tonight because of the application date, and that has requested that 2023-02, which would make an inter-fund transfer going from the general fund into specific funds. She needs to be able to move that money so the city can keep, keep on going on and doing its job. So up for first reading, ordinance number 2023-01, which is the resolution authorizing Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of St. Clairsville to file an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for local roads, oil, and shale program funding for the rehabilitation of North Sugar Street and declaring an emergency.
Elizabeth, I'm sorry, is that, is third reading on this one?
On 2023-01?
No, 22.
No, that'll be up for a second reading.
Okay, and Jeremy, it's okay that it's second reading?
Yes.
Yes.
We have until January 31st that that can pass, so we can pass this next meeting.
The other two they want to merge it.
Correct.
In this one, it just feels like.
Okay, would you read 2023-01 first reading, please?
Resolution number 2023-01, a resolution authorizing the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of St. Clairsville to file an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for local roads, oil, and shale program funding for the rehabilitation of North Sugar Street and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that concludes the first reading. There's been a request for emergency legislation. Do I have a motion to?
I believe that the rules require ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings, be suspended, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote on considering this emergency legislation.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
All members in favor?
Okay, would you read the motion or read the resolution ordinance, I'm sorry, read the ordinance again, and that'll be the second reading, and then we'll take a vote on.
Resolution number 2023-01, a resolution authorizing the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of St. Clairsville to file an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for local roads, oil, and shale program funding for the rehabilitation of North Sugar Street and declaring an emergency.
Seven of them.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Take a roll call vote, pass this legislation.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
All members in favor, motion carries.
Okay, 2023-01 been passed. Move on to 2023-02.
And this is the ordinance to make inter-fund transfers for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency. There are transfers to the street fund, parks and recreation, and the police fund.
Okay, would you read 2023-02?
Ordinance number 2023-02, an ordinance to make inter-fund transfers for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
That's first reading, does anyone want to make a motion?
I believe that the rules require ordinances and resolutions to be read, and three separate readings to be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Thrash second, we're going to take a vote on considering this emergency legislation.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
All members in favor?
Okay, we've considered this emergency legislation, so we'll read 2023-02 for the last reading.
Ordinance number 2023-02, an ordinance to make inter-fund transfers for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Does anyone want to make a motion? Thrash, you have a second? Okay, we'll take a vote on passage of ordinance 2023-02.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
All members in favor, motion carries.
Okay, 2023-02 been passed and emergency legislation. Final piece of legislation is 2022-49.
And this is up for a second reading tonight. It's felt that we can do this one in three readings. Like I mentioned last meeting, there's emergency language in here, so that once it is passed, if it's passed on the third reading, they can immediately go ahead and file the application. So up for second reading is resolution number 2022-49. That's a resolution authorizing the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of St. Clairsville to file an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, for Train Depot Rehabilitation Funding and declaring an emergency.
Okay, take, would you read ordinance 2022-49 for the second reading of this?
Resolution number 2022-49, a resolution authorizing the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of St. Clairsville to file an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, for Train Depot Rehabilitation Funding and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the second reading. This does not have to be passed on an emergency, however it can be if anyone wants to.
We're still working on it. I mean, it's up to council. I just like giving you guys options.
Okay, that's the second reading, so that no one wants to consider that emergency. Okay, that concludes the legislation for this evening. The next meeting will be again Tuesday, January 17th, 7:00 p.m. It'll be 2023, I think the date does say 2022 on the bottom, but that will again will be Tuesday because of the holiday, and that will be on the 17th. So that will at this time entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll see.